January 12th, 2021, council study session to order. Before we move on to tonight's agenda, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. On March 6th, the mayor issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, the governor issued proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings. The proclamation has been extended through January 19th. Due to these proclamations, tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone or to listen live to the meeting or make comments. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the staff presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. If there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments but did not sign up, please press star 3 on your phone now or under the later comments periods, and we will call on you using the last two digits of your phone number. I will also be sharing a summary of any comments that have been emailed to us regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance, and I will also note here that two council members have excused absences for this evening, and those are council members Goodman and council members Hall. They're excused. So I will now take roll call, and please say here when I call your name. Councilmember DeMichele?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Marts?
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda will be public comments. This is a general public comments period. And Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak at this time?
Yes. Leah Mystic? Leah, I'm going to request that you unmute now. You'll need to press star 6 on your phone, and then if you've muted your line, you'll also need to unmute.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm actually happy to comment after the study session on the electric vehicle readiness ordinance, if that's all right.
Yes, that's absolutely... Oh, go ahead, Council President.
Okay. Yes, that will be fine. We have multiple comment periods, so that will be great.
Thank you.
And also as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquahwa.gov. And so I think with that, since there is nobody else indicating to speak at this general public comments time, we can move into the first agenda item, and that is ID 0610, 2018 Building Code Update and Amendments to IMC Title 16 Buildings in Construction. This will be presented by James Gray, building official.
Thank you, Council President. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
So I will share my presentation here. My name is James Gray. I'm the building official with the City of Isaguá. I have Mark Lawrence with me here, who's Assistant Chief with Eastside Fire and Rescue. He can answer any questions about the fire code piece of it. Let me share my content. Let's start it.
Yes, we can see it. Yes, now it's in presenter mode. Great.
Thank you. So our purpose here tonight, again, I'm James Gray. I'm the building official with the City of Isaguá, joined by Mark Lawrence. Our purpose here tonight is to present the adoption of the 2018 code series to you for information tonight for approval, hopefully next week. The 2018 code series has building, mechanical, electrical, architectural, fire, several pieces that are in your council packet. That's just a couple of the highlights. So every three years, the building codes are re-adopted, re-reviewed at the international level, and re-adopted by the state, and then subsequently by the jurisdictions, which is why we're here this evening. So our adoption is required by the date that the state does their adoption, which currently is February 1st. However, we've had a little bit of a wrinkle in the last couple of days. The State Building Code Council approved a motion to extend that out to July 1st. However, that motion can be vetoed by the governor within seven days, and we will have an answer on that by the meeting next week. So we have some alternative language if that's the case. The Washington Association of Building Officials and several groups have petitioned the governor to veto it, and their hope is that that's what will happen. If that's the case, February 1st will be the adoption date for the state. So our direction needed is the review of the 2018 codes. I included a little graphic here from the International Code Council site that shows all of the documents. We don't adopt every one of those, but the majority of them we do adopt with a couple of others, like the energy code and the uniform plumbing code. So a little bit of background on what building codes are. For those that don't know, we're not typically talking about land use requirements, not generally talking about things like aesthetics or landscaping or those kind of things. This is structures of the buildings, how they're built, plumbing components that go into them, and the fire code has got sprinkler provisions, fire alarm provisions, emergency, rescue, the occupant loads of buildings, how they're wired electrically. All of those pieces are included in building code for design and construction. And then we've also got administrative provisions in our construction administrative code dealing with permit issuance and fees and things like that. We'll chat a little bit about that briefly. Some quick background, even before this arrow, again, I said the codes are every three years. So we're currently under the 2015 code cycle. In about 2015, they'd already started working on the 2018 codes at the national and international level. And what they do when they re-adopt the codes, there are, of course, new technologies that come about. There are code changes that happen just as a result of, for instance, large seismic events or large fires. Typically, they have to do with new technologies, like, for instance, like electric vehicles or like solar provisions, those kind of things that we need to look at every three years. So that started back in 2015, and that process continued up until the time that they adopted the code. Council President, there may be a question?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Marts?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. This is Councilmember Marts. I'm a little confused about what you said about the governor. Is there a risk that we go ahead? Like, how is the timing of what's occurring in Olympia related to this? And are we at risk of having our work nullified by changes? I mean, I know that we can't be less restrictive than the state. So are we at risk looking at this now before it's resolved at the state level?
Through the chair, the answer is that this just came up in the last two days, and we have been in touch with legal counsel. We've got some language that will give us some flexibility that will either approve it, have it effective February 1st or July 1st, whichever one they choose. But you are correct, we can't be less restrictive. We actually cannot adopt it before they do either. So it's kind of painted us into a box, but we will know that before next week's meeting, Councilmember.
Okay. Thank you very much. So there may be some maneuvering next week, depending on what happens in Olympia.
That's a possibility, Councilmember, and we have some flexible language that we have vetted with legal counsel that will account for that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So in about mid-2019, the State Building Code Council started working on it and proposed amendments for adoption. The legislature approved those amendments in November of 2019, and they actually approved it to go into effect two other times before February 1st. So this has been delayed a couple of times already due to the pandemic. The jurisdictions just have not been able to get together and work committees haven't been able to meet. So they finally settled on February 1st, and now that's got a little bit of a question in it. Our staff and our consultants began work in about May on this, and it is pretty extensive, the interconnection between all of the codes. They all talk to each other, and all of the jurisdictions in our local area, the eGov Alliance, were all working on the seismic and wind provisions through that whole period. And then hopefully, we will be adopting the code on the 1st. So as I said, they're republished and re-adopted every three years, and these technical committees that I was discussing, so at the national, international, state, and the local jurisdictional level, when a code is adopted, the building code, for instance, it has structural provisions, it's got architectural provisions, it has fire provisions, exiting provisions, all of those have separate committees that deal with the impacts of those particular pieces of it. So just not to put too fine a point on it, it's a lot of work has gone into that, and we use professional code consultants as well to assist us in that code adoption process. So when I use the term "building code," when you say "building code update" and "building and fire code update" for my fire cohort that's in the meeting here with me, we're talking about the whole suite. It's the actual documents, the state amendments, the local amendments, and we also include some amendments from the City of Bellevue. And I'll talk about that in just a moment, why we use the Bellevue amendments historically. But for tonight, I'd like to break this up just into these two pieces, what we call the construction administrative code, and then the fire and construction codes. That's the enabling language that says, hey, we're going to use the International Code Series as an example. The construction administrative code historically includes fees, but ordinance 2926, which council approved in November, already covered that. The exception is some fire fees, which the fire marshal will be able to discuss this evening if you have questions. Brief summary of changes, and there's a lot of changes in your council packet, as you've seen, but the Washington State Energy Code is probably the biggest. As council probably is aware, the state of Washington is on the forefront of energy efficiency for the country, and the City of Isaguá is on the forefront of the state of Washington. So we're proud to be in that category of really high energy efficiency for construction and design. And the State Energy Code was pretty significantly updated for 2018. Some code cleanup. We have proposed to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code this time. We used to use the Uniform Housing Code, which was from 1997, old code, didn't get updated, it was not coordinated with the other codes. So this is also a cleanup piece. It's not significantly different. And the City of Bellevue amendments. So just briefly to discuss a couple of those, Chapter 9 out of the building code covers fire suppression, that sprinklers, fire alarms, smoke control, those kind of things. Chapter 10 covers exiting and occupant loads, those pieces. The City of Bellevue provides mutual aid for the City of Isaguá. So in the case of a big fire, a big emergency event, you would see City of Bellevue trucks roll to assist us. And as a result, we use their amendments for pieces of Chapter 9. An example would be something like smoke control. When there's a fire in, let's say, a high-rise building, and you have a lot of smoke, so smoke is what kills people in fires typically, and the emergency systems can exhaust that smoke immediately, or it can be set up so firefighters can go to the panel and put a key in and turn it and turn the fans on or the dampers to let the smoke in or let the smoke out. All of the way those systems work is governed by policies and amendments with the City of Bellevue because it's their crews that are responding to those fires. That's one example, but there's multiple amendments from the City of Bellevue, and we have historically adopted those. This is not new, but we are proposing to re-adopt those. And then the eGov Alliance, I spoke a little bit about that, and the Zone 1 Fire Marshals. What we're doing here is leveraging the work of all of these cities rather than having everybody do their own thing. For instance, the snow design load that we use for buildings, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for me as building official to go out and measure snow on roofs and say, well, gosh, it's 25 pounds per square foot in a really bad winter. So all of these cities work together and combine their efforts so that we don't have to recreate the wheel. And then the revisions to the construction administrative code, which we talked about a little bit. So council, your options tonight, we believe, are to approve the code adoption proposals that we have put before you next week. You can also, the second option is you can modify specific provisions of the code as long as they're least as restrictive with the states. And the exception to that is the residential code. It takes specific prior approval by the State Building Code Council. So the residential code's a little trickier. If the council chose to modify individual provisions of the other codes, those are intertwined pretty significantly between each other, as I've stated. So in the building code, it will tell you, you've got to put a sink in this way and use the International Mechanical Code to deal with the vent, as an example. So you wouldn't want to change that provision about the sink without coordinating it with the mechanical code, and that's a very simple example, but there are lots and lots of those. So those are the reasons why we have these code committees that do this and code consultants that take on that work. And lastly, if you don't approve the adoption, then the state codes will be enforced by default, either on February 1st or July 1st, whichever date that falls in. But all of our local requirements, our fees, our ability to enforce the code, code enforcement, many provisions like that, we would not be able to enforce. The staff's recommendation is that you proceed with adoption of the codes at your regular council meeting next week on the 19th. Briefly where we're at in the timing and the next steps, we're at the study session today. Next week is your regular council meeting. We're hoping for adoption then. If you agree and we adopt the codes next week and the February 1st date sticks, then January 29th will be the last date that projects could be submitted, accepted as complete under the current code, which is the 2015 code series. And then February 1st would be the effective date. Now beyond that, we are continuing work on sustainable buildings, energy, and electric vehicles, as you know, and my cohort, Megan, is going to provide an update on the electric vehicle piece of it. In addition to that, the energy code, which really is separate from the electric vehicle piece of it, all of that is being continually worked as we have new technologies and new elements that come into the code. So even though the energy code has been substantially upgraded on this 2018 cycle, there's more work that continues into that into 2023. So Council President, with that, that is generally the end of my proposal tonight, my presentation tonight. We are asking for your direction on adopting the codes next week, and if there are questions from the council or the public, the fire marshal and I are here and able to answer those.
Thank you. And I will note that for tonight's agenda, the ID 0610, 2018 Building Code Update and Amendments to IMC Title 16 Buildings and Construction was presented jointly with ID 0792, the 2018 Fire Code Update. So thank you for both of those presentations, and I do see that we have a question now from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. And James, I want to say thank you very much for a thorough memo and explanation in our packet. I did not know all of that information about Bellevue Fire Support, and so that was very interesting to follow that through on that path. So I have two questions for you. First of all, you mentioned enforcement, and I know part of enforcement is in, is it in Title 18 in one of the sections of the title? Or is it just in Title 16? Oh, you're muted.
Councilmember through the chair, the enforcement of the building codes is in Title 16. Title 18 is a land use, and they do have enforcement provisions in Title 18 that have to do with landscaping and trees and different sets of the code.
Okay, so there's nothing in this that needs to take into account that we're still working on Title 18. When we do the work on Title 18, that will take into account any of the enforcement pieces that might need to be integrated, correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. Fantastic. And then the other thing, I'm wondering if you or Florence, if someone can walk us through the fire fees and those changes and what they mean. And you're also...
I believe you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Sure, I assume you all got the email about history of fire fees that are recently sent out that LALI forwarded. Generally, our fees are not designed the way building fees are. Recently, the building fees were approved at an 80% recovery rate. The International Code Council publishes a book every six months, I believe it is, and they list cost of a building construction by type of construction, i.e. wood frame, and square footage of that structure. You take those, multiply it together, it'll give you valuation of that building. Therefore, the building department can say, this permit, construction permit for a building is worth this much, and we're going to base our fee on that. So that's pretty cut and dry. When we're talking about fire fees, an individual fire sprinkler system, for example, is custom designed for a particular building. So there are no printed guidelines that say what a system costs for this size building, correct? So historically, our fees are based on fees of other cities, other jurisdictions, and our neighboring cities, cities of the east side, i.e. this side of Seattle. We all work together, and sort of a market rate, if you will. There's really no way to say this particular system is going to be four hours for review, 10 hours for inspections, plus administrative time of three hours. It just, it doesn't work out that way. So we try to do the best we can to do some sort of cost recovery for the city that does pay for fire marshal services in the Eastside Fire Contract, but it's not broken out hourly. There's just no way to accurately do that. So the term "market rate" comes to mind, and recently, we looked at the market rate of the City of Bellevue and Redmond, which do the same exact service we do, and we're comparing our new rates to the rates of those two cities. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh, did you have any additional questions?
No, that was it. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. I am not seeing any other questions from council at this point. I will ask Clerk, has anybody indicated a desire to speak at the public comment portion for this particular topic?
No, but I do see we have one additional phone-in caller. So if I could just ask, if anyone on the line is interested in making comments on this topic, please press star 3 on your phone. That's star 3, and we'll call on you. And I'm just doing a quick look here, and I don't see that anyone is indicating a desire to comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have a question from Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. I think my only question is, how are we communicating this to the public? I know that there's a deadline where the codes switch over on January 29th, and so people who are currently constructing something, have they been informed of the deadlines? And how do people know that we're going to have this sweeping change to the code? James, I'll ask you.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So we advertise it pretty extensively on our website, and it's on our permitting page, and we regularly meet with the architects and the engineers and the designers who submit things. For instance, the training on these 2018 codes, it seems like we've been going through it for 10 years, but it hasn't been that long. And all of those same designers are in the same training that we're in, and there's a lot of, what are they called? They're like email groups, for instance, Washington Association of Building Officials, Zone 1 Fire Marshals. Those groups also communicate with the private sector. So there are folks that'll be surprised, but I think the news has been pretty widely distributed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I am not seeing additional questions at this point, so before we move to council direction, I will summarize the email comments that we received. This is something that we're doing during virtual meetings. We did receive one email comment specific to this informational item this evening, and that comment from a resident was regarding that commercial businesses should be required to maintain the areas around the commercial businesses, and also had questions around the State Energy Code as far as what changes had been made and what our purview was as a city for changing that night. I think that was more of a question from that resident, and that concludes our email correspondence that we received on this topic. So I will now move into council direction. If anybody has any direction on this item, please indicate in the chat. Okay, I will wait, and while I do so, this is Council President Hunt, I will say, thank you for the very detailed information that was in our packet. It's good information for us to have, and I appreciate the explanations that were given here as far as how that information will get out to people as well. And overall, I think proceeding, I think there's good reason to proceed with the timeline. And lastly, I did want to say thank you, too, for addressing the issue around timing flexibility with the state as far as, you know, running that by our legal counsel and squaring that away. I am not, oh, I do see one question from Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Council President. I just wondered about the possibility of putting it on the consent agenda for next week?
We will, yes, we will be deciding that. We don't decide that at this meeting, but we will be deciding that in our subsequent meetings, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am not seeing any further comments or questions from any council members, so thank you. Thank you again for being here and for talking us through that item. I think with that, we can move on to our second, technically our third, item, which is ID 0791, Electrical Vehicle Charging. Yes, and that will be presented by Megan Curtis Murphy.
Thank you much. I will go ahead and share my screen. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Megan Curtis Murphy, and I'm the Senior Sustainability Coordinator for the city. Tonight, I'll be presenting about the proposed electric vehicle, or EV, ordinance that was requested to come before council this evening. The purpose of the presentation is to discuss the proposed ordinance that would require EV charging infrastructure in new multifamily and commercial buildings, as well as substantial retrofits. The administration will bring the proposed EV charging ordinance to the Planning Policy Commission later this week and to the Environmental Board later this month for input and recommendations. This evening, we are looking for direction from the council on the overall proposal, which will increase the infrastructure needed to support electric vehicles in the city. Specifically, there are two components of the ordinance I wish to discuss and get feedback on from the council. The first is the use of incentives to encourage electric vehicle readiness in single-family homes and... of incentives to encourage electric vehicle readiness in single-family homes and town homes, and the second is the use of a waiver for affordable housing units, so as not to add cost to these projects. There are several reasons why this is an optimal time to implement an EV charging ordinance infrastructure. Back in 2014, Issaquah adopted greenhouse gas emission targets. And transportation makes up 38% of our community emissions, so increasing EV ridership will help us move closer to our city's goals. The Sustainable Building Action Strategy is another city plan that supports the ordinance. It was adopted by city council in 2017 and includes a strategy to prioritize clean and shared mobility design by updating codes for electric vehicles. We also have the city's Mobility Master Plan, which includes a policy to help increase use of electric vehicles, which these standards will help to do so. And lastly, increasing the EV infrastructure was identified as a priority at the community convening on climate. Together with local organizations, we presented the recommendations from the convening at the October 19th council meeting. Councilmembers then requested the proposal to come before them in January. Another reason why an EV ordinance is especially important for Issaquah right now is that King County is expected to experience rapid growth in EV ownership in the coming years. One reason for this is that Washington State passed a law in 2020 that will require automakers to sell a certain percentage of zero emission vehicles each year. A similar law is already on the books in California, which has the largest percentage of EV market share in the country. In addition, electric vehicles are expected to achieve price parity with gas vehicles as soon as 2023, and they're cheaper to own and maintain than gas vehicles. However, one factor that may inhibit growth is the lack of access to EV charging infrastructure, which this ordinance will help address. The people most affected are those living in multifamily housing, which unfairly deters them from the benefits of EV ownership, since most EV charging happens at home. This is why the policy requiring electric vehicle charging infrastructure in apartments is particularly needed to increase EV ownership. Before we get into the details of the proposal, I want to clarify some of the lingo around the various types of EV infrastructure. So this ordinance is looking at Level 2 charging, which is the most common because it allows for cars to charge faster. Requires a 240-volt circuit, so think about an outlet for a dryer, for example, rather than the simple 110-volt plug point. The first type of EV charging is EV-capable, which means there's electric panel capacity and space to support Level 2 charging, but no outlet installed. The second type of EV infrastructure is EV-ready. So this provides designated parking space that is provided with a 240-volt dedicated circuit for a charging station. And this includes the plug point for the charger, but not the charging equipment itself. So in the image shown here, the EV-ready includes all the parts up to the end of the pink line at the parking spot and outlet. And then finally, there's EVSE, or Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment, which is the final part, which includes the charging station itself, which allows cars to plug in and charge up. There are many states and jurisdictions that have implemented EV codes already. Many are along the West Coast, with the most in California. One reason for this is likely the policy I discussed earlier that California has in place that requires the automakers to sell a certain percentage of electric vehicles each year. This is the policy that Washington State just adopted last year. So many jurisdictions in California have already adopted the policies to increase the charging infrastructure to meet that demand. This slide shows the jurisdictions in Washington that currently have EV codes, or are in the process of developing them. The Regional Code Collaboration, or RCC, is a collection of jurisdictions around King County that work together to collect research and develop green codes to help achieve greater consistency across the boundaries. The RCC developed the EV charging code this past year through a large stakeholder process with jurisdictions, the EV industry, utilities, and several interest groups. So the next steps is for cities like Issaquah to consider it and modify it as needed for their individual jurisdictions. The chart to the left shows the basics of the model RCC code. And the proposed King County code is based on this, and each of the other jurisdictions have slightly different codes, but most are pretty similar to this one. The cities of Bellevue, Kirkland, and Redmond all included the development of EV codes in their recent climate action plans, and expressed interest in using the RCC model for their own jurisdictions as well, possibly this year as well. Overall, the city's proposed ordinance is based on and is very similar to the Regional Code Collaborations model. The biggest difference is that the city's ordinance deviates from that with an incentive for single-family and townhome charging rather than a requirement. The administration is proposing projects that install EV-ready infrastructure to receive a $350 incentive for each EV-ready parking space installed. So this incentive would be in the form of reduced building permit fees. And from our research, this incentive will most likely cover the majority, if not all, the expenses of EV-ready infrastructure for these types of buildings. So we'll look at the cost a bit closer on a future slide as well. And since 70%, 90% of people charge their vehicles at home, the administration believes it's important to have this incentive to encourage the installation of charging infrastructure when a building is first constructed. And the city is recommending this incentive rather than a requirement because of state law, which prevents cities from making amendments to the state building code that affects single-family residential construction without approval from the State Building Code Council, which James referenced in the last presentation as well. So although this code is in the city's land use code rather than building code, the administration is recommending this use of incentives rather than requirements. The city is also proposing waiving the EV infrastructure requirements for affordable housing units at or below 80% of the area median income. So in other words, the number of affordable housing units does not need to be included in the calculation for EV parking spaces. Developing more affordable housing in Issaquah is really a priority of the city, so we don't want to add any additional requirements or costs that could impact a project. However, single-family or townhome affordable housing units are still eligible for the EV-ready incentive program. We'll now look at the specific components of the proposal. So this first slide shows the proposed requirements for multifamily residential buildings. So for all new in construction of multifamily buildings, the proposed ordinance would require 10% of the parking spots have EVSE, or the Complete Charging Infrastructure, and also 30% of the parking spaces would be EV-ready, meaning that they have the outlet or terminal available to easily install the charging equipment. And for all existing multifamily buildings undergoing substantial improvements or retrofits, 10% of those parking spots will have EVSE, which is the same as the new construction, and 20% will be EV-ready. And just for reference, a substantial improvement is defined as any repair, reconstruction, or improvement of a structure where the cost is equal to or exceeds 50% of the actual cash or market value, so a pretty big project.
Megan, we do have a question from Councilmember Martz.
Sure.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Martz. Repeat again for me, I'm a little confused. We've got, the proposal has requirements, but then in some cases, it has an incentive because it can't have a requirement? Tell me again that difference.
Yes. So for multifamily buildings and commercial buildings, we're able to have that requirement. But as James was talking about, for single-family residential code, we're not able to propose requirements because you need to get approval from the State Building Code Council. And that is for building code. But in the land use code, through kind of our legal counsel, we found that it would be better have incentives for this rather than the requirements for the single family.
Okay, because I thought for building code, you could be more restrictive than the state, just not less restrictive. But it seems like if you put in a EV parking requirement, that's just, that's being more restrictive, not less.
And you can, but just not for the single-family residential. So we can do for the commercial and the multifamily, but not for the single family.
So the laws are different for single family in this regard?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That explains it. I appreciate that.
So moving on to the commercial. So since most EV charging happens at home, the proposed ordinance places higher EV infrastructure requirements on multifamily residential buildings than non-residential buildings. So this slide showing the non-residential buildings, we're proposing that 5% of the parking spaces must have the EV supply equipment installed, and 10% be EV-ready. So these requirements apply both new construction and the substantial improvements. And there's also the same requirement for any new paved surface parking lots and parking garages. And all of these requirements are the same as the Regional Code Collaborations Model ordinance.
If we can pause for one minute, Councilmember Martz has a question.
Do we know if any of our development agreement partners are putting in EV? In other words, in the parking that's going in, for instance, with Costco, the fraction of parking stalls that have, that are either EVSE or EV-ready?
Specifically for the various development agreements, I'm not sure. Some do have some sustainability requirements, but it's not usually as spelled out as you have to have a percent of this or a percent of that. It's usually more through conversations about that, so that's why it's important to get some requirements on the books. Costco definitely does install some EV chargers and has them in their parking garage. I'm not sure of the exact number or percent. We have looked at a few other recent projects. For example, a couple recent apartment buildings where they're installing about 1% of their parking with electric vehicle chargers. It's harder to tell what percent is EV-ready, just because that's not something that we're reviewing for. But just having the chargers in place, so from those buildings, it's about 1%. From a more recent commercial building, it was about 2.5% had EV chargers in place.
Okay. I would love to know at the next meeting what Costco is doing, just because I feel that's a state-of-the-art implementation, and it would give me a good yardstick to compare these numbers to. Thank you.
Great. So now looking at the costs. So the cost for EV-ready and EV supply equipment, new construction, are shown in the first two columns here, with the total cost in the third. So those, the third column is those added together. And the last column shows the estimated cost for retrofits. And these costs were deducted by King County after consultation with EV charging infrastructure companies. So the cost of EV infrastructure installation will vary based on factors like building type, charger type, and whether it's new construction or retrofit. And it's important to note that EV readiness retrofits cost about 2 to 8 times more than the new EV-ready construction when you build it in the first place. And some of the reasons for this is that it's due to breaking and repairing walls, the need to upgrade electric service panels, breaking and repairing parking surfaces or sidewalks, adding more expensive methods of conduit installation, and also the additional cost of permitting and inspection costs. So overall, this is why it's important to build it when it's first, when the building's first built.
Megan, if we can pause, Councilmember Ray has a question.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. I'm just curious why there's such a significant variance in townhomes, well, primarily townhomes, for EV-ready and EVSE and new construction?
Yeah. So I believe this is due to kind of what charger gets installed. So there's smart chargers and dumb chargers. So the smart ones have a lot more capability to program and do a lot more monitoring. So it really, there's a lot of different choices about what you're actually installing there. I think that's primarily the reasons for that.
Yeah, but it wouldn't affect the EV-ready. I mean, if the charger's really the end equipment, so it's just, there's, you know, difference between $150 and $3,600 for EV-ready.
Yes.
Puzzling to me.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that question. I believe I do have the reason for that. So give me one second here. Not memorized. I might have to get back to you on that one, but I think we do have further clarification of what that means for that specific cost.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember DeMichele has a question.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the apartment, commercial, and parking lots, and it says total cost range 4,200 to 4,750. If we had a large apartment complex with, let's just say, 200 units or 250 units, is that the price that we're looking at, or would this be a multiple of the estimate that we have in front of us?
This is per stall.
Per stall?
Yep. So the number, so if it was a 100 parking building for commercial, then they would, there would need to be five chargers installed. So it would be that cost times five.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, I think we are ready to proceed. Thanks.
So after discussing the proposed ordinance, there's a few options before council this evening. The first option is to direct the administration to continue work on the proposal as is. Another option is to add revisions to the proposed ordinance. And then the third option would be to not continue the proposal at this time. Our recommendation is to continue work on the proposal and to bring the ordinance back to council for action in March. And then here is a timeline showing the next steps for the EV proposal. So on Thursday, we'll be discussing with the Planning Policy Commission, and then on the 27th, with the newly-formed Environmental Board. Then it will go before PPC for a public hearing, and then return to council on March 1st for action. And again, here is the direction needed for this evening as we go into questions and discussion. And thank you. And that concludes my presentation for this evening.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. So we will have opportunity now for council Q and A. And I have my, okay, we do have some questions. So Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, and thank you, Megan. I got a bunch of questions. So in the case of, I guess, apartments and townhomes in particular, if they just do EV-ready, is it possible later to add on the EVSE that allows for, I guess it would be the smart versions that allow for electrical billing to match to the apartment resident?
Yes. So for, you're asking that for townhomes specifically, or for more apartment complexes?
Townhomes or apartments. In either case, you have multiple billing people at the same residence.
Yes. Yeah. So if it was just EV-ready, it would have the plug point. So if it was a townhome with a garage, then someone could probably just plug in their car like that. But if it had, you know, parking off in a parking garage, there'd probably need to be the designated spots. So that's where it makes sense to really have that supply equipment installed, where they could monitor who it is and do the billing properly for that. And if it was just EV-ready, then they wouldn't have that ability.
Okay. And I guess in an apartment building, let's say with a garage, if they had EV-ready plugs that weren't in use with the EVSE, they would probably just block them off so that it wouldn't get billed to the-
Most likely. Yeah. So EV-ready would allow them to have something kind of over that, so it wouldn't be necessarily used, but it would be set up to be used.
Okay. Have we considered incentives for apartments? I know we're looking at this as a way to offer, or rather- I know we're looking at this as a way to offer, or rather, having to offer incentives rather than requirements for single-family and townhomes when it comes to apartments or multifamily. Have we considered any incentives there?
Right now, we have been looking at the requirements. There's more certainty that we would actually get the parking in place with requirements. So that's generally the route that most jurisdictions have taken for that type of building. Specifically in apartments, there's oftentimes lower-income residents who may not be able to afford a single-family home and be able to have their own, install their own infrastructure. So with apartments, it's really important to be able to get that in place so that everyone has equal access to kind of that charging infrastructure. Depending on the incentive piece, it would also, it could quite be likely be more costly to incentivize on an apartment building scale. It would probably need to be a quite higher incentive level in order to get projects to do that. I'm not quite sure what that dollar amount would be. That's overall why we went for those requirements.
Let me clarify. I didn't mean incentives instead of requirements. I meant in addition to. Is that something that we have considered or potentially priced out? What that would look like by project, say for some of the projects that we have, that we know are coming?
I haven't looked at that that much to do the incentives on top of that. Looking at kind of that cost table, we price the incentive based more on the single-family. So we'd have to look a little bit more about what an appropriate incentive would need to be for the multifamily. But since they'd already be doing it by the requirement, as you're saying, it sounds like you're just looking for maybe some sort of kind of bonus type of incentive for doing it.
Yeah. Or maybe an incentive for going beyond the number or something like that. I mean, ultimately, this is asking for developers to have an additional requirement that will cost them money and that will thus increase rents. So I'm trying to look at ways that it might make sense. And if the incentive is looking at it as basically a reduction in permit fees, that isn't necessarily paying out, it's just reduced. Anyway, another question. Have we looked at or considered a carve-out for requirements for locations that are near transit? And one of the reasons I ask this is because I don't want to necessarily discourage someone from using mass transit in order, because we've made it easier to use an electric vehicle. And so I wonder if there's a way that we kind of help that situation out.
We haven't looked at it on a location basis. This would be more just across-the-board requirement. I think that we will be looking at other pieces to incentivize more ride-sharing and public transit as we do the Title 18 updates. That's one of the goals that we're going to be working on with some of those code updates. This is really to bring buildings, to get them ready for all the EVs that are going to be coming. So people are still going to be having their own vehicles, whether they drive them to work or not. So this isn't adding parking spots. It's more just taking parking spots that are already going to be existing them, but making them so people can plug in their vehicles.
Okay. That's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Now we have a question from Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. I'm feeling a little bit like non-EV kind of person right now. But, so EV-ready is a plug. And then the supply equipment, the SE of EV SE, I do, do I need to have the supply equipment to plug into? Or can I plug directly into a 2 or a 240-volt outlet? I'm just not certain.
Yes. So there, with EV-ready, with the plug point, you can plug directly into that. The way we're defining EV-ready is it's that 240 volt. So that is level two that you could plug into. For commercial and apartments, usually they would be wanting to track it and charge for it. You know, so they may not, they probably aren't just going to have the plug point available for people. So that's where they would put on the charging station itself. So the EV SE, the supply equipment, is just another word for charging station.
Okay. And that does, that adds some value in terms of charging and maybe even some smart capabilities. But if on a residential, I just have EV-ready, then I am, I'm pretty much good to go. I just plug into my wall. I don't have to drag the cord up to my dryer outlet. And that's it.
Correct. Yes. And getting at some of those benefits of the smart chargers, I would say another one that is really important for our future is that it allows people to charge at night. So you can program when you want your vehicle to charge, so you can charge it off-peak times. So it's possible there might be incentives or other things for that in the future as utilities are looking at, you know, how to decrease demand at certain times. So being able to charge at night is really a benefit rather than charging during those peak times.
Cool. And then last question, we got any feedback from the developer community or rental property owners on this proposed ordinance?
Yes. So we've talked with a property owner and developer in town to talk with them about the ordinance and overall feeling, you know, prefer not requirements, but also they are building some EV chargers themselves. Also talked with the Master Builders Association, and they are generally supportive of the ordinance, particularly with the incentives for single-family rather than requirements for single-family. I've not talked with rental property owners about it. Just done the research to see kind of what we're getting now. So that's where we're seeing that about 1% of the parking places have the charging equipment.
And we're not looking to do any kind of retrofit for existing multifamily? This would just all be new construction, is that the intent?
So there is some retrofit requirements. So if a building is going, undergoing the substantial improvement, so the 50% of the market value, they would be required to come up to speed with EV requirements, which are slightly different for new construction versus...
Substantial retrofit. But our existing stock of multifamily wouldn't be dragged, required to do EV stations, correct?
That is correct. And that's another reason why I think some of the commercial charging is important. So people that are living in multifamilies that don't have access to it, they might still be able to charge at other places, even if their own building doesn't have a charging station.
That's great. Thanks, Megan.
Okay. Great. So we have a few things here. Councilmember Walsh has a clarification on Councilmember Ray's question first.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I just wanted to clarify, as a Model 3, Tesla Model 3 owner, you can charge using just basically a wall outlet. You just do so very, very slowly. So it is possible, but the 240 definitely helps with EV-ready.
Thank you. And we also have a comment to help answer an earlier question from Deputy City Administrator Snyder.
Hi. Good evening, council members. Thank you. This is Andrea Snyder, the Deputy City Administrator. I have an answer. James was able to look up really quickly how many stalls that Costco is providing that are EV-ready, and that's 86. So 86 is the required that meets the 5% of their stalls that they have in their parking garage.
Thank you very much for that timely answer to our question. So I am looking at the chat. I do not see any additional questions from council at this time. I'll pause for one more minute in case anybody has a late-breaking question. I'm still not seeing anybody. So Clerk, I believe we do have several members of the community that would like to speak on this topic?
Yes. Leah, I am going to request that you unmute now. You'll need to press star six on your phone, and you may also need to unmute your phone if you've muted it as well.
Hi there. I believe you can hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you so much, and good evening, council members and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today. My name is Leah Mithic. I work for Climate Solutions, which is a regional clean energy nonprofit with a mission of accelerating clean energy solutions to the climate crisis. I also participated in Issaquah's community convening on climate, and I'm here to comment today on this proposed electric vehicle readiness ordinance. And we're excited to see this type of ordinance being considered, and I want to thank staff for their work to bring this forward. Not having a place to charge at home is consistently cited as one of the main barriers to purchasing an EV. And given the fact, some of which were mentioned, that EVs will achieve upfront cost parity in a few years, they're much cheaper to operate, state policy is promoting electric vehicles, and Puget Sound Energy is working on a transportation electrification plan. We need to ensure that we're taking these simple but important actions to ensure that this transition is not hindered. We need to electrify our vehicles in order to meet Issaquah's climate goal. But while we broadly support such an ordinance, we do have some recommendations that in our view are critical to ensure this ordinance is adequate and equitable. The provisions for multifamily and non-residential buildings in this proposed ordinance are generally aligned with what we see elsewhere, including in Seattle, the proposed King County ordinance that they're considering, and the Regional Code Collaboration proposal that Megan talked about. And we support these. However, we strongly object to exempting single-family homes and townhomes from EV readiness requirements and instead providing an incentive. Ensuring these buildings are EV-ready during construction is very low-cost, and it prevents the needs for expensive retrofits down the road, as you saw, that are many times the cost. Therefore, we recommend including single-family and townhomes under this ordinance. We want Issaquah to organize to set a strong precedent for other cities. Furthermore, other cities such as Seattle, which is very high-profile, include this building type in their ordinances, and they have places under their land use code, and they have not experienced legal challenges, which was mentioned as a concern. In our view, the incentive dollars proposed for single-family and townhome builders could be better directed to places where they would make a larger difference. For example, we would rather see these dollars being targeted toward charging access for affordable housing residents or toward public charging that could be accessed by all community members, including those who currently lack home charging access. We also do not believe that affordable housing should be exempt, as this creates a significant equity issue. These buildings will be in place for decades, and in that timeframe, EVs will become the predominant new vehicle. EVs are also far cheaper to operate. It is unfair that those living in affordable housing might be excluded from this opportunity. We do understand the concerns about cost and certainly don't want to stymie development of affordable housing. So that's why we would recommend evaluating where the dollars associated with this proposal are flowing, rather to incentivize EV readiness in a building type where it is very low-cost to do so, single-family or townhome. We would rather city money be spent where it would be more impactful and equitable. We would also recommend retaining the city's current parking reduction for charging installation while still requiring EV readiness for affordable housing. EV readiness is not a primary driver of construction cost, especially when parking is already included in a building. We suggest bringing down construction costs and other ways that would actually be far, far more impactful, rather than waiving affordable housing and setting up this equity issue. I'm happy to further discuss these recommendations with anybody. And again, we are really excited that Issaquah is considering this important matter, and we look forward to working together to improve and implement this proposed ordinance so it can be a strong example for other cities throughout Washington. Thank you again.
Thank you, Leah. City Clerk, I believe we have another member of the community that would like to speak?
Yes. Ann Fletcher. Ann, I'm requesting you unmute now. Please press star six.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Okay. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Ann Fletcher. I'm a resident of Issaquah and leader of People for Climate Action. I also am a six-year electric vehicle user as a sidelight. The positives of this ordinance are numerous. I do appreciate that the community convening, council members, and administration recognize the need for an electric vehicle ordinance, and they have actually requested it to come to them as one important way to reduce carbon emissions. We can increase the proportion of electric vehicle cars while still decreasing the overall number of cars and car trips through use of transit, biking, et cetera. But EV use will further decrease carbon emissions. My second positive is that city policies and plans do support this, as Megan mentioned in her staff report. And I believe that older plans only provide general support, but they do need to be updated more often because the market and emerging sustainability solutions are happening so fast. My third positive point is that I think that the work with the Regional Code Collaboration and other research groups like Climate Solutions is really important so that we can get good data and good projections on the technical aspects of all of this. And then the fourth is that I appreciate the city's process of multiple reviews and inputs from a variety of departments and community groups, and I think this will ensure a final ordinance that will be successful. I have two improvements that I wanted to mention, and these have been brought up before. From my perspective, we do need to find a way to require single-family duplex and townhomes to be electric vehicle-ready. I realize this adds to the cost, but it would add to the value. And I realize that there are state regulations, and there seems to be some question about that that I was not aware of. But I do appreciate that this would be stated in the staff report, perhaps some more research on that, and explain why this can't happen. I also think we need to lobby the state representatives about increasing the state building construction standards to be more progressive. And I think that if we're going to have incentives to encourage the electric vehicles through reduction in city permits or whatever, those funds, if they're limited, should be prioritized to make electric vehicle charging possible in affordable housing. The affordable housing that is the below 80% AMI, the average-medium increase. And my second improvement is about affordable housing itself. I do think we need a way to include affordable, to include electric vehicles without the cost being prohibitive. And if requiring it will mean affordable housing projects can't be done due to the cost, then I think that needs to be explained in the staff report. And then let's work to see if there's a way, we can't expand the wording in the ordinance to require affordable housing developers to work with the city to include electric vehicles in a cost-neutral manner. And this could be through decreased parking requirements, adding incentives, such as reducing permit fees to larger, some of the larger projects, or other methods that will work for both the city and developers. I know this is a tricky area. I just believe we need to do our due diligence on this if we want to truly be equitable and equitable city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. City Clerk, has anybody else indicated a desire to speak on this topic?
No one else had signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak. Real quickly, again, I do see at least one phone-in caller. If you are interested in making comments on this item, please press star three on your phone. Okay. And it looks like we do have someone who'd like to make comments with the last two-digit zero-two. I'm going to request that you unmute. You'll need to press star six on your phone, and then if you've muted your phone, you'll also need to unmute. I see that you're unmuted on my end, but you may also need to unmute your own phone. Okay. And it looks like the hand may have been lowered. Okay, and it looks like the hand may have been lowered. So, uh, well, no, I'm sorry. I'm going to give this caller one more opportunity, I've unmuted you on my end. If you'd like to make comments tonight, please unmute your phone.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, yeah, this is Hal Ferris with Spectrum Development Solutions, we're the developer that is still working on, uh, the transit-oriented development next to the, uh, transit station between Maple and Newport. I've met many of you in the past, um, and I was calling tonight because, um, I speak to the electric vehicle, uh, charging stations from an operational standpoint and, uh, we are pursuing, uh, both as a commitment to you, the city, um, and as our own goal is a leadership in environmental design and in that, to achieve a silver or gold rating, we have to have the percentage of our parking stalls that are, um, electrical vehicle stationed. And I believe that's why Costco has the percentage that they have is because they're probably pursuing a leadership in environmental design goal, requirement. So, there's, um, already a motivation to do that. We find, um, in our, in our project, we have 0.8 stalls per unit. So that means that if, if a resident in our building has a car, they only have one car per apartment and if you only have one car, you're less likely to have an electrical vehicle because of the range limitation on range, uh, that you have with it. So we don't find the high, as high percentage in our apartments, uh, where we have limited parking, where we're encouraging transit use rather than having people have a car and we have fewer people come with electrical vehicles as a result. And to have this requirement, uh, the other way we operate is when you only have 5% of your parking stalls with electrical vehicle, we don't assign parking and a person pulls into that stall, they charge their vehicle and then they have to leave that stall and go to a different parking stall that's available so somebody else can use that station. So if you require 20% or 30% of the units of the parking stalls to have electrical vehicle, now you're going to have to assign a person to that stall that has an electrical vehicle and you won't have enough cars to do that right now and you'll have station plugins that aren't going to be used by people that have a gasoline car. So, from an operational standpoint, this needs work, especially when you're close to transit, as Councilmember Walsh represented, um, and we have fewer people with cars and our goal is to get people to live in our, uh, in the building that will not come with a car. We're going to have, um, bicycles that they can use and we would like to have, um, you know, car, uh, car share type thing that they can use so that people will be able to live there without having, um, a car at all. So, I think the, this, um, goal, which I admire, it needs to be thought further from an operational standpoint. Um, it does have a cost, the cost that you're showing on here for multifamily new is about half of what we find the actual cost is when you include not just the equipment, but all the electrical upgrades, the general contractor, the electrical contractor, everybody else that gets involved in it. You may have got your numbers from the people that are selling and promoting electrical vehicle plug-in stations, but it does not represent the cost that we see, what we have to pay to actually put in one that's ready for people to use and it's fully ready. And all of those costs, even if, uh, the affordable housing, uh, King County Housing Authority, as you know, and we're managing their project also, um, they will be building a building adjacent, there's adjacent, um, and they're also pursuing a leadership in environmental design goal. It's one that's set up for, um, affordable housing, so they will also have, um, affordable or, um, electrical vehicle stations, but it'll be the lower percentage that's required to achieve that sustainability level. So there will be some there, just not 20% or 30%. And last, um, we've been working, and I feel like we've been working with the City of Isakua, even though you haven't heard with, from me for quite some time, on the project. Um, and since we, uh, uh, entered and executed a memorandum of understanding with the city in 2017, so it's been over three and a half years, since that time, um, we have not been able to get our project vested because we haven't had land control and many of you are aware of the conditions we've had to deal with centrally to try to achieve land control. But over that time, the city has taken a number of actions that have significantly increased our, uh, cost on the project. One of the most notable and easily quantifiable is your impact fees have almost doubled since we had an MOU signed and that increased our cost for the project by almost $2 million just on impact fees, even though the affordable housing, uh, impact fees are waived. So that's, and, and just in context, City of Isakua's impact fees now are 22,000 a unit and the City of Redmond, for example, are 8,000 a unit. So, compared to any other eastside city, the City of Isakua's fees are almost double the next closest one, which doesn't help for anybody to try to achieve affordability. Um, but you've also passed design guidelines that worked in place at the time that we submitted our project that have increased our costs and then to add on to that, additional requirements for electrical vehicle stations and other fees that are being added, just continues to push in a hole and trying to make this project work. Um, so I just, the, the changes to the building code are things the City of Isakua needs to do and we're very well aware of it, everybody in the development community. This is one of the most significant changes to the building code and the energy code that have come about in this three-year cycle and it has a huge impact on multifamily development because of how we have to provide fresh air into the units. Um, we can no longer have it come through the trickle vents in the windows, we have to duct it, um, we have to use a lot more recycled air than we were using before, so this whole energy code was done before COVID that now makes us use recycled air and the equipment is just not there to keep up with or provide the technology for the mechanical systems in a, in a high virus and COVID-sensitive environment. So, there's a lot of uncertainty there. Um, I would ask the council really consider delaying this, this.
Mr. Harris? Mr. Harris?
Yes.
This is the clerk, just letting you know that you have reached the end of your five-minute comment period, so please sum up your comments.
I would just ask you to delay adding this on top of the building code changes and let the building code changes be adopted and worked into the system and then add the electrical vehicle station or exempt those projects that are close to transit, um, that would otherwise, um, ha- have to have it, especially if they're going to commit to a lead goal that already is providing electrical vehicle stations, uh, charging stations. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you for those comments. City clerk, has there, is there anybody else on the line or anybody else indicating that they would like to speak on this topic?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will now briefly summarize emails that we've received on this topic. Uh, we received four emails from community members generally in support, um, of the ordinance with some, um, additional comments as well. Uh, one of the comments was making sure that the ordinance does work for the segment that needs it most, which would be low-income individuals and the segment of our population that is, um, most suffers from our dependence on fossil fuels. Um, we also heard about, um, considering including affordable in the requirements and offering a financial, um, incentive for redirecting those resources towards requiring EV readiness for affordable housing. Um, we had questions about the city's plans for electrifying, electrifying its fleet of cars and, um, and then also, uh, in a generally supportive email. One, uh, resident wrote to us more in support of promoting the use of shared community space charging, um, and not the, not as much the incentive program, which would be for the single-family, um, single-family homes. And then we also received one email from a resident which had a lot of questions about data on EV charging stations, um, and how this plan fits into our established other plans and goals and, um, other, wanting more information about our current status. So that concludes the emails that we received specific to this topic. Okay, and I think at this point, we will now move into council direction. I will look to the chat for any council members wishing to give direction or comments on this item. All right, I will start with Councilmember Mart.
Or Councilmember Ray?
Sorry, yes, thank you. Um, Councilmember Ray was first, Councilmember Ray and then Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Council President Hunt, this is Chris Ray. Thank you, Councilmember Martz for looking out for my well-being. Um, so I am just intrigued and would like to explore before we bring this, um, back, what would truly be involved with making the residential, um, EV charging requirement and not an incentive, um, um, piece of the, of the ordinance? So, I think there are ways that we can make that happen and I would like to, to more explore them before we take final action on that. So that's, that's my, uh, my single comment on this.
Great, thank you. Um, and now Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Uh, so, uh, you know, there are certain rare conversations that just make me feel breathtakingly old in the sense that, um, breathtaking changes have occurred during my adult life. You know, 21 years ago, I rented a Honda EV at LAX and, uh, there were a decent number of charging stations in that general area, but I was going over to the valley and there were very, very few charging stations in the valley and so I wound up having to do things like, uh, take a cab from my charging station back to my hotel and, and stuff like that. So, uh, you know, and then 12 years ago, running for council, I had a resident, um, have a peak oil conversation with me and about how peak oil was going to lead to sort of Mad Max-type situations. And so, to now see 12 years later, uh, the, the, the ever-increasing range of electric vehicles that are being made available and all that that means environmentally as well as economically, as well as US foreign policy, I mean, just so many, uh, places is, is just really wonderful. And so I am generally very supportive of efforts to support the community's, um, uh, conversion to electric vehicles. Um, you know, I too am interested in understanding better the possibility of switching single-family home and townhome to requirement instead of incentive. Uh, I think it's an interesting conversation about the affordable housing exemption. Um, I would like to think about or at least have considered, um, exemptions for TOD projects. I feel like if you have a, if you have a project that's getting, you know, the, the state TOD, uh, funding like, uh, our project would, um, should it, should it go forward? Um, it seems like you've already got, you know, you'd be sort of putting incentive on top of incentive. I don't know exactly where I am on it, but I think it's worth considering, uh, that projects that are already adjoining, uh, transit are, are, you know, uh, I would be interested to have that conversation with my fellow council members about whether we need to do double incentives, um, in that regard. Uh, and that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember De Michelle has a comment.
Uh, thank you, this is, uh, Councilmember De Michelle. Um, first of all, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Ferris for his comments because I did have a lot of questions that I think he has answered, uh, through his comments about how this would impact of the, the TOD Opportunity Center project, which does, in my mind, seem to be a special project because it is, uh, right, going to be right next to the Transit Center and of course, if this, if it's approved, it will be right next to the Transit Center and, um, there will be a lot of incentives built in for people not to have cars at that particular location. And, um, we are thinking of, um, changing the rules to apply to all affordable housing projects. So I think we have to think about, is the TOD project a special project that needs some exemption? Um, as a, uh, person who lives in multifamily housing, I do think there is an equity issue here. I agree with other comments that were made. Uh, I personally couldn't buy an electric vehicle right now, there is no place for me to charge it at all, uh, because of the, the way that my complex is put together and I'm sure that's true of any complexes. So, um, when we're looking at multifamily and, uh, affordable housing, um, in general, I think there is definitely an equity issue that needs to be addressed. Another, um, group that I would like to bring into the conversation, um, is the Imagine Housing, um, people, they do affordable housing all over the Puget Sound region. I'd like to have their input in to how significant would the impact of, uh, requiring, uh, charging stations, uh, during construction, how significant would that be in their plans to build or not build affordable housing? Uh, there may be other groups, but certainly that one comes to mind right away as, uh, as a group that could give us some very good input as to how impactful it would be. Um, so generally, I, I favor the idea of requiring affordable housing developers to, uh, install, uh, percentage of, uh, their parking stalls have to be, uh, EV-ready, but, um, I think we need to think, it's, it's a real balancing act because we also very desperately need affordable housing. So, I think we need a little bit more input into that and how that's going to impact the construction fees and, um, even the decision to build or not to build. Um, I think that's all of my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. I do not see other council members, um, at this time, so I will make my comments. Um, I'm in enthusiastic support of this. I think if we think about why we're doing this, uh, one big reason is that we had this climbing convening, climate convening earlier, um, in 2020 and the, there was a very strong need from the community to not just make plans or not just, um, have discussions, but really to act. And I think that if we have that kind of meeting and we get that kind of message from our community, we should follow up and act and I very much appreciate the, um, very much appreciate Megan and all the individuals who worked on this so that we could, um, follow up on our obligation to act, um, following that convening. So, overall, an enthusiastic support and I think this is really important for us and I also think we are well-positioned to lead. We've led before on things like the plastic bag ban. I was not on council at the time, but Councilmember Martz was. And, um, we have a reputation, I think, to be a leader, um, on environmental issues and I think we have opportunity to lead here as well. And pairing that with a enthusiastic community that wants to, um, make a difference and, and have cleaner air and do their part, um, supporting them in that endeavor is, is really important and it also, um, I'm, I'm just really glad that I'm in a position to be able to work on this kind of legislation. So, uh, overall in support and I did want to make a few comments regarding the specific areas that you had requested some feedback on. I am not in support of the incentive, um, or the incentive as it appears here and my reason for that is that a lot of other cities are working on using the Regional Code Collaborations code, which does include single-family requirements and I think that it's very likely that other cities, you know, will, will adopt something or we may adopt something and then other cities can learn from us and then, um, potentially another city will figure out a way to, uh, require this for single-family and townhomes, duplex, triplex and fourplex. And so I would like to not, uh, not give that incentive, but rather, um, if anything, see if we can, um, learn from other cities such as Seattle who have required it. So I would like to explore that further, see if we could require it. Most charging does occur at home and, um, having it be required for those residences is definitely preferable in my opinion. Uh, and then for affordable housing, the conversation around being, also being transit-oriented, I think is an important conversation to have. This, this policy will go through the Planning Policy Commission as well as the Environmental Board and I think there's probably a lot of good conversation that could happen, um, at those boards around that kind of specifics. Generally, I think there's compelling equity reasons to require this for affordable housing. You know, as was pointed out by one of the people who wrote to us from our community, um, lower-income people are those who are most affected by our dependence on fossil fuels. We see that, um, in equity in terms of air pollution, for example, and so, um, to also not have the infrastructure available for lower-income individuals to, um, choose a EV or electric vehicle, I think is, is a big concern. So, um, I think that part needs work. I don't think I'm currently in favor of the waiver, but I think the transit, uh, discussion is. but I think the transit discussion is definitely worth exploring more. Yeah, and so then, you know, the last thing that I thought while I was reading this is one of our goals in our strategic plan is in infrastructure, that we have a system that's planned, designed, built, and maintained well and supports current and future community needs. And I think this takes us a big step in that direction. I am not seeing any further comments from council. I'll keep my eye on the chat. City Administrator, a question for council?
Yes, Council President, members of the council, good evening. Thank you for the input. I think the input is significant. We have several other touchpoints scheduled, the planning policy, the environment board. Based on these comments, I don't believe we can move forward to those groups until we come back to you to have the discussion regarding the single-family issue, the discussion regarding affordable housing. I think those are significant potential changes to this. So what I'd like to propose is that we not go to planning policy and the environment board until we are able to come back to the council. I think we will need the city attorney at a study session. He has conflicts, I think, with these evenings with other jurisdictions, so I will need to check with him. I think we could hope to come back to you at your February 9th. Study session would be the goal, and I think we would be able to have Mr. Haney, who has spent quite a bit of time looking at the issues regarding the single-family, to come and speak to that. And I think that'd also give us a few weeks to talk to other affordable housing interests. So, Council President, members of the council, that would be our recommendation, is that we would hold off on any further community review of this until the council is able to consider those other points. Plus, of course, there are two members of the council not with us this evening, and I think it probably would be important to hear from them as well.
Thank you, City Administrator. I think there is a question in there for us about if we think that that is the next step. So I will look at, do any councilmembers have any feedback for City Administrator Bob Quitz on what he just said? Comment from Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I think there's an argument for hearing from the community. It could come back here first, but I'm also interested in hearing how the community feels about all three of these issues, about single-family housing, about affordable housing, and about TOD housing. So whether it comes back to council first and then goes out to the community or goes out to the community and hear from our commissions and the community before it comes back, is six of one, half dozen of another to me. Thank you.
Thank you. I will make a comment in response to that. This has been a longstanding work item. It was in our work plan for 2020 to have an EV ordinance. And I would also like to have the community conversation. I think we're at that point. I think we raise questions in these study sessions, and we are interested in getting more information. But I think that we can get that information and go out to the community. That's my, that would be my preference, so we can keep moving ahead and demonstrate this commitment to action that I spoke to earlier.
And Council President, members of the council, my only hesitation is the pilloring that your staff has received from the Planning Policy Commission when we have done this. And certainly on the sustainability group, we got a stern talking to saying, why don't you bring us what the council has decided? So with that caveat, we will make it clear that we've been directed to do this. And if planning policy then expresses their frustration once again, I just wanted to raise that issue. Your staff's working very hard. We're trying, I think, to move this forward. But I just feel it's important for me to raise the frustration that your citizen bodies then feel reacting to something that you haven't fully baked. So with that caveat, we'll certainly disclose all of this. But we spent a lot of time in the fall, city staff, getting our wrists slapped because we were bringing things here that the council hadn't fully baked. So with that, we're happy to follow the council's direction. We'll try to come back. Megan, when is the environment board set to consider this?
Environmental Board is on the 27th, and the PPC is on this Thursday. And that's the first, PPC has two touches, so this would be the PPC discussion on the item. And then the public hearing wouldn't be until the 11th. So the public hearing would be on the specific ordinance. So it's possible we could put that off until council has a chance to look at it again, but maybe still have the discussion on Thursday.
And we would have to, because there would be no ordinance if the council's touching it again no sooner than the 9th of February. So we could do that. And again, I just feel obligated to share certainly the experiences and the frustration that we heard from your citizen boards in the fall. And my guess is we would have this as well again. But we're happy to go down whatever road you think is appropriate.
Thank you for that additional information. Councilmember Martz has another comment.
Yeah, thank you. Respectfully, I am concerned and don't understand your comment, City Administrator. For the last 11 years, every conversation I've had that has involved PPC has been us saying, what does PPC think we should do? And then 80 to 90% of the time, we do what PPC wants. So I don't understand why all of a sudden the paradigm is that PPC wants to know what we want first. I think we've demonstrated a strong commitment to wanting to get their input before we set public policy. Thank you.
And if I may, Councilmember Martz, of course, I only have a year-plus of experience with them, and certainly have, you know, there was lots of anguished conversations from them last fall regarding the sustainability board. So I'm just responding to that board's change. I certainly don't disagree with your comment. I'm just trying to manage this as far as staff is concerned because staff has to deal with the response that we receive from the citizen boards.
All right, well, I'll just restate that I care greatly what they think, and I don't think we'd be putting the cart before the horse to ask them to give an opinion on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Okay, we do have a comment from Councilmember De Michelle. And I will say too, as a former planning policy member, the work that they do is very important, and it's very important in part because they, in large part, because they talk through issues in depth, and they give us different perspectives, and we can then consider their perspective when we come back to the table and look at this again. So I think that having them have the conversation would be very valuable. And as a former planning policy member, I think that it's a policy decision that would be also something that they would have good insights into. And I will now turn over to Councilmember De Michelle, who also has a comment.
I'll just plus one, Councilmember Martz. And during my long period of time at King County, working in public outreach, the criticism we always heard was, you bring us something that you don't really want our input into. And I think we're doing just the opposite. We're saying, we want your input so that that can help guide our decision. I think that's the way it should be done. And so we may have different philosophies about public input, but I think it's much better to go with an unformed plan than with a fully-formed plan that then we feel that we have to defend. I'd rather have their input and then work collaboratively toward a final solution. So I'm just in total agreement with the other comments that have been made.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. I am looking if there are any additional comments. I am not seeing any. So Megan, do you have what you need in terms of direction?
Yes, I do. So it sounds like more exploration into the single-family requirements, the Affordable Housing waiver, and then specifically looking at TOD projects. Thank you for that.
Yes, I think that summarizes it really well. I'm not seeing any additional comments. Anything additional from City Administrator?
No, I just appreciate the council's feedback, and I hope that you will appreciate the feedback that I have shared because it was real. And there were very tense discussions, really focused on staff in a very negative way, and it happened. And so I recognize many of you have other, longer experiences. I only share the experience of the previous year or so that we went through with multiple meetings where there was a lot of frustration about planning policy. So thank you. We'll come back in February with the additional information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, City Administrator Bob Quitz. I think at this time, we are ready to go to our last agenda item of the evening, which is ID 0560, Old Town Subarea Architectural Standards. And this will be presented by Kristin Leeson, Senior Planner.
President Hunt, and good evening. I'm going to share my screen with you. Can you see the screen?
Yes, we can see the screen.
Great, thank you. So tonight, we are here to introduce the Old Town Draft, Old Town Architectural Standards for Single Family Duplex to you all, and then discuss and get feedback that you may have. And direction needed, again, we want to hear what you have to say. We'd like any feedback that you have on the draft standards, and if there's additional information that you might need to help you make a, to take action on this standards, we'd love to hear that as well. You may recall, in 2018, we updated the Old Town Subarea Plan. And Goal L said to preserve residential neighborhoods. Policy 5.1 said adopt architectural standards, and Immediate Action 1 said new standards. Now, I should point out here that when we started this process, Immediate Action 1 actually says to amend design standards for cultural and business district and adopts new architectural standards for single-family duplex. As we got into the update for cultural and business district and multifamily standards that are existing, we thought, this is going to be easy. It's a piece of cake. We need to do some updates and some clarifications. And as we got into it, we realized this was a much harder process that needs public input that we couldn't do in 2020 because of COVID. So we opted to postpone that and pick that up again with Title 18 and just focus on our single-family standards for right now. So I am going to move through these at, well, a relatively high level today. But I do feel free to launch into all of the standards, but there are a lot there. But I have our experts here, Sam Suter from Metta Urban Design, she's our consultant, and Lucy Sloman, the Land Use Manager. They're here to help answer some of those in-depth questions that you may have. So as for this timeline, in September 2019, we launched it with a stakeholder lunch. And then in January 2020, we held a walk audit and workshop with about 40-plus residents and property owners who showed up. February 2020, we shared, or we had discussions with the Planning Policy Commission and Development Commission about what we had heard so far and what should be included in the standards. And then we also came to, in February, we had a council study session for the same discussion. On October 7th of this year, we had a joint PPC and DC meeting to look at the first draft of the standards, and we got some really good feedback from them. We made those changes. And then on December 10th, we had a public hearing at Planning Policy Commission where they recommended approval of the standards. So we're on a third draft that's been available to the public. The topics that we have are building mass and scale or shape and size, roof design, building materials and colors, front porches, doors, and windows, front yards and fences, and driveways and garages. And like I said, I'm not going to get deep into the content here, but feel free to jump in if you like and go deeper. So where do these apply? These apply only to structures located within the single-family duplex zone, which is here in the mustard color, right in this area. It's the older part of Old Town, the original township. One of the discussions that we had was where exactly do these apply? Who has to comply with these standards? So any new development, any tear downs and rebuilds has to comply. Significant redevelopment has to comply. Significant redevelopment means anything that requires a structural change to the building, such as adding on a second story, maybe doubling the size of your house. And our last discussion was, it took us a long time to get here, but it was about accessory dwelling units, and how much do they have to comply? We realized that the standards really apply mostly to those things that face the street, that can be seen from the street. And we really want to encourage and not discourage accessory dwelling units. So accessory dwelling units just must be consistent in color, either similar to or consistent with the color of the main house. I am going to touch on the changes that the commissions, that we did because of commission discussions, just so you know where we landed here. We added an introduction just to talk about the character of Old Town, which wasn't originally there. We tightened up the standards to show that they are standards and not guidelines by doing things like making tighter menus, more prescriptive menus, and taking out any may's or should's that were accidentally left in there and putting in shall. We tightened up key terms, more clearly defined them. We clarified, as I mentioned, what must comply with standards. We flipped intros and character pages so that it starts off now saying, we're going to talk about roofs, and this is kind of what we're going for, this is what it's about, and followed by, here's how you get there. We added clarifications for planners and easier enforcement. And then one of the conversations that came up was whether or not to allow deviations from standards. And, you know, realizing that what we've done here is a really light touch, is requested by the public, the commissions, and the council, there really shouldn't be any reason to need to deviate from the standards. So we opted not to include that here. Building mass and scale. What we heard is, please don't regulate style. Don't say it has to be craftsman. Don't say it has to be mid-mod. Allow us to keep the eclectic nature, but don't allow big boxes. Make sure that things are broken up so there's some visual interest around here. So in that vein, the intent of this chapter is to produce buildings that are consistent in the scale and character of the existing buildings, to avoid big boxes, to make sure that they're broken up, and to think about the design so that it's an interesting design. Here, there weren't many changes asked. We just added some key terms, and we made it more prescriptive, as I mentioned before, with the menus and shelves. So I'm going to move on to Chapter 2, unless you all want to jump in, or I can just keep going.
Thank you, Kristin. I'm not seeing any questions at this time, so I think you can proceed.
Okay. So Chapter 2 is roof design. We heard a couple of different things. One was the community and the commissions really wanted to prohibit flat roofs. The council, you may recall, wanted to potentially add or allow for flat roofs, especially if there was something such as green roofs or rooftop decks that were incorporated in there. So that is what we did. You can have a flat roof for more than 50% of your building as long as it is either green roof or rooftop deck. So the intent that we came up with are, we want to ensure that the roof complements the style of the building. We want to prevent large uninterrupted expanses of roof, just like we do for the structures themselves, and then create a more interesting visual street skip. We just don't want to see lines, you know, horizontal lines going all the way across the street. You need to break it up a little bit. Changes that we made here, we did some technical changes and switched some things around, moving things from chapters. We added pictures. The colors weren't quite clear to the commissions, so we clarified that, you know, what a medium roof color is, which is up above, and said that we can go all the way to medium roof tones to black. And one of the questions that came up was the way that we measure flat roofs. Was it clear to staff? They thought maybe we needed to change that, but we said we're good, all good. Okay. So Chapter 3, Building Materials and Color. We heard all sorts of things here. First, it was, we want to worry about what it looks like and that it's durable, but we want to make sure that it's cost-effective and practical, that it doesn't impose an extra expense on us. that it doesn't impose an extra expense on us. Commissioners said, no, we want a little bit more guidance on what the materials can be, what's appropriate, what's not. We had a long discussion about log cabins. I think that was with them. And then council said, no, don't focus on style of materials. Let's talk about what's appropriate and inappropriate citywide, which is what we opted to do. So this is a big one. Lots of intents here, but ultimately it is to allow for richness and vibrancy while highlighting the architecture and, you know, allowing to, you know, continuing that eclectic style. I won't go into all six of these. One of the ways that we're proposing to do that is through the Muncil Color Book, which you see on the right-hand side. And Samantha can explain this better than I can, however, I will try. So the colors here, these are just samples from it, reds and blues. And there is a, on the left-hand side, you start at zero, and then the more muted colors. And then the further you go right, the more vibrant the colors become. And they are numbered zero through, I think, 26. And usually cities, when they use this system, will go from zero to eight. You can use any colors from zero to eight. And what we're proposing to do is go all the way up to 14, unless you want to paint your door a different color. And then the door can go above that, up to 26. So that's what we're proposing with the colors. It's a pretty broad way of doing it and allows for a lot of colors, more than typical homeowners associations would allow. Some of the changes that we made, there was reference to Citywide Materials List, which we deleted because we don't have one. The commissions asked that we include standards about continuing materials on the front of the building around the sides of the facade for a certain distance. We did that. We added a standard prohibiting what you see on the right-hand side, which is a rainbow-colored house. You can change colors horizontally, but that's as long as the material changes as well. ADUs, I talked about those, that they have to be consistent with the main house. And as I mentioned, the use of high-intensity, really bright fluorescent colors can only be used on the front door. And then we initially, I should have taken this one out. Initially, there was no mention of what the garage door had to be. In the next draft, we added that the garage door had to be either the same color or darker than the body of the house. But then the commission said, uh-uh, that's too much. So we pulled that out. So I should have left it out altogether, but it's here. That's why. Okay. Chapter 4, Front Porches, Doors, and Windows. This is funny. What we heard was require front doors and porches, you know, front doors and windows in the front facade. They have to face the street. Don't be too prescriptive. So we said, create human-oriented design elements. You want to maintain a lively and active streetscape and provide weather protection. And so what we did is, you know, what you could have wound up with had we just left it with, you know, you must have a door and a window facing the street, was a one-by-one window. So we added a minimum area for glass, which I believe is 18 square feet, which gives you a little variety. You could do, you know, two-by-nine window. We addressed over and under configuration of duplexes, which came up. We clarified some key terms that weren't real clear in the original draft. We established minimum sizes for the front porch and recessed entry. A front porch has to be at least 50% of the width of the house, but it can't be less than 10 feet. And it has to be a minimum of five feet deep. And they asked about potentially allowing the front porch to encroach into the front yard. And we decided, no. The front setback is already 10 feet, so it gets really close to the sidewalk. And we sort of wanted to keep that character. Nobody else really does that. Nobody else comes that close to the sidewalks. We decided to try and, to allow them to encroach close to the sidewalk would be not characteristic of what's already there. So front yards and fences. What we heard, don't regulate setbacks based on the street. And what that means is if most houses, 50% of the houses are set back at 20 feet, then anything new that comes in should be at about 20 feet. And they also, you know, what we heard was, don't do that. Allow them to go to 10 feet. Allow usable space for active front yards. Prohibit front yards that are completely hardscaped. So no full-on basketball courts covering the whole thing. And no parking that covers the whole thing. And require a walkway from the street to the front door. So we said, make, create clear, defined welcoming and safe entry entries. Create active front yards that, you know, foster social interaction and ensure natural elements and plants that are integrated into the design. So one of the things that came up, we started talking about how much impervious could go in the front yard. And you can do 50% impervious. You can go higher than that if you choose, you can go up to 70% if you do something that's usable, such as a blotchy ball court in your front yard. We did some more key definitions and key terms. Something else that came up, the commissions asked if, what we thought about chain-link fences and if we were going to prohibit those. And after driving around Old Town, we realized there are quite a few chain-link fences there that don't deter from the existing character. So we opted to be silent on those, which would still allow them in the area. Last chapter, driveways and garages. What we heard very clearly from everyone was if alleys are available, then people need to access their garages from the alley. If alleys are not available, then they want to prioritize the human. In other words, they don't want to pull up and see a garage sitting way out in front of the house with the front door tucked behind it. Needs to be set back with the house. So again, we prioritized human circulation, and the intents are in to minimize pedestrian and vehicular conflicts. Some of the changes that we made, I really like this, and I'm going to go back to this one to show it better. We added, it got a little confusing, I will say. The commissions were a little confused, so we added this graphic. And at the bottom, you can see which standards apply. And if you are loaded behind the house, then these standards apply. And if you are loaded in front of the house, then these standards apply. We added minimum lengths for alley-loaded driveways. We clarified some definitions. We specified that when garages are allowed to be integrated within the house because there are some situations where it would need to happen. We added diagrams for clarification. And this photo on the bottom right was included in the first draft and clearly did not meet what we wanted the standards to do, so we removed that picture. Lastly, the glossary. There are definitions that are in Title 18. So we added a title appendix. Once the two are incorporated together, once with the Title 18 update, we will remove the appendix and they'll just all be one. We identified definitions from Central ISACWA standards, added key terms that were up above into the glossary, and added diagrams to help define these. So our options tonight, if you all need additional information and need to discuss this at another future study session, we can do that. Or you could direct us staff to bring the standards to the February 1st regular council meeting for action. Our recommendation is to move these forward to the February 1st regular council meeting. And Council President Hunt, that is all that I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we will now have an opportunity for council to ask questions. I am looking at the chat. I am not currently seeing anyone. Give me one more minute. Okay. Well, we can also ask questions after. City Clerk, is anybody indicating or has anybody signed up to speak on this item?
No, and actually, there's no one from the public on the call at this time.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for letting me know. And I will, at this time, also summarize two emails that we received from community members. And I will also caveat this with, there has been a lot of other input from the community. So these are just emails that we've received in the last several months that I believe are specific to this particular touch with this architectural standards. So we received two emails specific to this informational item this evening. And both of them were opposed to the architectural standards. In summary, felt that it was overreach and too specific. And one resident who wrote and who objected to the architectural standards also felt that the real issue was things more along the lines of lack of sidewalk or sidewalk upkeep and other, more of that sort of issue. And so that concludes the comments that we've received recently specific to this item. Council, anybody have any comments or direction or questions at this time regarding this item? Okay, yes, now we're getting some comments. Councilmember De Michelle.
Thanks. Thanks, this is Councilmember De Michelle. I am a resident of Old Town, and I did participate in the walk-around back in January. So I think that the staff has done an excellent job of reflecting what I heard at that particular meeting. And this has been a year-long process, and there's been input from hundreds of people, I'm sure, at this point. But I think the staff has held that vision of an eclectic neighborhood. The pictures that you show show a range of styles, from very modern to very traditional. I feel like people coming in there are going to have a choice about, have many choices about how to create a new house or a remodel. And so I'm really pleased with the final product here. So I don't have any changes to suggest. I think that there's been ample public input, and I would be supportive of having this come to us on February 1st.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Yeah, I think this is an instance where the community, the staff, the consultants of the commissions were all heard and worked well together. I would hold this up as a shining example of things that have gone right. And very much appreciate that. I think the document is gorgeous. And I hope we see all of those wonderful things built in Old Town. But also, I think it gives an example of what is clear communication, both based on what we've heard from the community, but also giving people who come here in the future a clear understanding of what they can build in order to fit into this neighborhood. And then finally, I would like to say the questions that the commissions had at their most recent meeting, I loved seeing the answers to those. I thought they were very well thought out and really answered all of the questions that I had. So at this point, I don't have any concerns with what has been presented, and I'm comfortable seeing it in February. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Looking if there's any other comments. Okay, I have one brief comment. This is Council President Hunt. I looked back at the Old Town Subarea Plan, and one of the goals there was to preserve residential neighborhoods, preserve the scale and character of the residential neighborhoods while ensuring a variety of housing that meets community needs. I think that we took action as a council earlier to limit some other heights and things that also were in the plan and that also are about this scale and character. The one that I've heard as a concern is kind of around massing or this idea that you have a big flat, you have a big flat facade of a building with no interest, and you don't really see that in Old Town. And I think there is a concern about if that were to become an architectural thing that you are seeing, that that would change the character. So that's the only one that I've, I think, heard from residents directly as a concern. And my, so my concern reading through this architectural standard is I think that residents are basically happy with the neighborhoods where, the way it looks and, you know, the general character and feel. And we've heard that from the community. So I would just want to make sure that, that things like where you mentioned, staff had gone through and they did see that there were chain-link fences, so they left that in that that was consistent. And the one area where I wasn't sure about that is around colors, because people do like to have choice in colors. And I wasn't sure about the three colors in particular. It seems like that might be prescriptive. And I've never also heard from anybody about, with concerns about the colors that are used in Old Town. So that was the one area where I thought it may have been a bit too prescriptive. And let's see. That's it for my comments, I think, generally. You know, we said we wanted a light touch, and I think it is a light touch generally. Well, does any other council members have any comments or direction that they would like to give? Okay, I have also not heard, Kristin, just to answer one of your questions, I didn't hear any council members wishing to have an additional study session on this. So I think, I think we have what we need from the study session, so thank you for that. Right, last call, if there's any additional comments on this item. Kristin, do you have what you need?
I do, that's what I need. Thank you.
Okay. All right, that was our last item. And we do have a good of the order on our agenda this evening. So at this time, I will ask if any council members have anything that they would like to, like to say a good of the order? Okay, and I am not seeing anyone or not seeing anybody indicate. So with that, this meeting is adjourned at 8:37 PM. Thank you all very much.